Let's hover on that. Tip it over.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
It also feels dark in here.
Yeah, it does. Oh, that says five o'clock, but our clock.
Five o'clock.
Fixing our clock in here.
Ready to go live? Good? Okay. All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Compliance, we have met compliance with official notifications. Roll call, please.
All right, we got Ed Gallagher, that's me, I'm here. Brooke Taylor. Seen her on Zoom.
Here.
Steve Stupak.
Here.
Laura Gapsky.
Yeah.
Mike Meyer. Not here.
He's excused.
Steve Olson.
Here.
President Albert.
Here.
All right, at this time, would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, action taken at today's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. Uh, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comment signup sheet and handing it uh to the deputy clerk. You hear here. Uh, comments should be focused on the items being considered by the board and should be restricted to no more than three minutes length. With that disposition of minutes from our June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That will move into the report of the superintendent. Uh, then there's no action item or no discussion items, no informational items, so we'll go right to the three action items. Uh, the committee recommends approval of a resolution twenty-two dash zero-three. That's the annual resolution designating the district administrator as the legal authorized representative for the district for July one of twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Okay.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just that this is an annual action item that you guys act on.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the designation of a deputy clerk. Administration recommends a designation of Ann Schultz as deputy clerk effective July eleventh.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna welcome Ann. We're super excited and she's with us.
Congratulations.
Thank you for taking this on. She's learning tonight, right? Yep, Casey's been a good teacher. Awesome.
We can learn together.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last, we've got the WIAA membership renewal. The committee recommends approval of resolution twenty-two dash zero-five renewing the WIAA membership for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is again something that we do every year. Is there any discussion?
So, I don't know where she, oh, you wanna say anything about this?
Well, just uh something I think of every year.
It's like boilerplate stuff, what we do over here. There's no other discussion then. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Right, as I said, there were no discussion items, no informational items. Do you have anything else?
I do.
Okay, that will conclude superintendent's report.
Good job.
All right, with that, moving to board committee reports, starting out Teaching and Learning Committee. We have no action items, no discussion items, a couple of informational items. District of Superior pursuant to sections one eighteen point three zero parent one A and one twenty point twelve parent thirteen of the Wisconsin State statutes will use the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction academic standards for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year. Policies can be viewed on the School District of Superior website and on the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction website. And yes?
Move to approve.
Some information.
Cause it's informational, so I don't have to do this.
And then we have a June, Juneteenth update from Carrie Saunders.
Okay, I just wanted to uh just stay for just a minute uh to give you an update on the Juneteenth event that was at Rutgers Island. It was actually on June eighteenth. Sam Furman and I uh represented the school district. So we did have a presence for the first time um.
Ever?
Ever. Uh, and then we also both uh were at the Juneteenth event uh in Duluth, and there were several of our students there uh as well. So it was very cold, lots of preparation went into the event. Um, and we're just really hopeful that, you know, as we continue working and um working with BSU that they'll have a strong presence at the Juneteenth event as well. Connected with the BSU from Denfeld School, and they um are definitely interested in partnering and kind of helping to show our BSU what they've done to uh become a little more active in the community. Uh, so I was really excited about that. There, there was a lot of planning that went into it, and we had giveaways for the kids and then uh community members were able to um take like a colorful post-it and just write any sort of advice or wishes that they had for the students, and then the plan was to make like a mosaic quilt out of the post-it notes, and it would be at the high school for the kids, like just to read. And so there were really cool things that were written to the students, and we'll continue that. Um, and I think Sam, do you wanna add anything else?
Um, I'll just add that Carrie did phenomenal. I mean, the work that you put in, um, it's why I'm here today. It was so over the top, just wonderful, like our booth was pretty awesome. And I just showed up just in case anyone's wondering, I didn't do any of that stuff. She made labels for the kids, name tags, and um, she had everything ready for them. She had all this Spartan swag to give away and um, lots of community members came over and spoke with us. So that was really, I thank you so much for all of your hard work, cause it was really more than I was expecting and a really great representation for our district, and I was so excited about next year.
Yeah, I, I am too, and I was very happy to have Sam there with me. We've got a lot of work to do with our BSU and, and we'll get there. So yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, with that, who's the Teaching and Learning Committee? So to entertain a motion to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee's report is presented.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move into Policies and Rules Committee. We have no action items, no discussion items, and one informational item. That is the District Student Handbook has been updated for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is there any?
Just that um, there's really no significant updates except for the, the approval that you guys made in May or June, that was June, I think, around the code of conduct. Otherwise, all the other updates are names, dates, those kinds of things. Um, families will um receive this as part of the, their um back to school, back to school um information, so they'll receive that in August.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion to accept the Policies and Rules Committee's report is presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, next, we have the Budget and Insurance Committee. We have four action items, starting off with gifts, grants, and bequests. The committee recommends approval to accept the gifts, grants, and bequests received in June of twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you. The all night grad party was pretty fun. My son was there and pretty much enjoyed it, so it's always a community effort and just wanna say thank you again.
Okay. No other discussion? And all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we've got authorizing pre-approved bills. The committee recommends approval of resolution twenty-two dash zero-four. That's an annual resolution authorizing payment of pre-approved bills from July one of twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Again, this is another one of those resolutions that we do every year. Any other discussion? Hearing none then. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we've got the New School Activity Account. The committee recommends approval of requests for new school activity account for the Black Student Union.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna thank Carrie. Well, I just wanna clarify what this is. My understanding, this is an account that we create so students can fundraise. So this isn't necessarily like a new budget code. This is um, this allows students to fundraise, and then that money that they fundraise can go into uh things that they have identified.
We're really excited about doing some fundraising. We have ideas and we're adamant that we.
Which is pretty typical for any of our groups at the high school and middle school have, have an account like this.
And my understanding, this is a new group, which I'm very, very excited about, and I know our teamwork's hard on, so thanks Advent and folks that helped out the parents and students that really led this.
On the purpose, just one question. Extracurricular or co-curricular? Should it be extracurricular or should it be co-curricular? Extracurricular in my mind has been what we have done with the WIAA, with athletic teams, all of our other co-curriculars, uh whether they be clubs or other organizations, uh Mock Trial, Harvard Model UN, I'm, I'm sure if I had the list in front of me from the high school, there's other multiple co-curriculars.
Do we have different accounts depending on, yeah, the same thing?
No.
Yeah. Whether it's, yeah.
Well, so this, this would not fall under the same as Mock Trial or
Right.
or FBLA because those are state, yeah, I think competition.
This will be similar to like if the third graders at Hooper wanted to raise money
Okay.
to go on a field trip.
Or like, yeah. Like, it can fall under the same thing.
So we're calling, we are calling all of that extracurriculars now.
Well, I don't know why the, is it on there to be differentiated?
I don't know.
Oh, I, it doesn't from a, like a coding perspective.
Okay.
It doesn't make any difference, and that's really what this is, the purpose of, is as far as to make sure that we create the account and that way and add it to the account structure, but from a coding perspective.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, then all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the CISA twelve property purchase. Consider approval of the CISA twelve Board of Control Resolution to purchase real property for CISA usage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion.
Okay, go ahead. Sure? Yeah. Um, so I'll give a little bit of background, and then Laura, if you would chime in, as our CISA twelve rep. So for those of us who work closely with CISA twelve, um, CISA twelve has been using a facility that's very, very old and um is in need of significant renovations. And um, they have a new director um this past year. Taken it um, uh, has done some work with stakeholders to investigate the opportunity to either build a new facility, remodel the facility, or lease other facilities within the city of Ashland. So um, over the last year, I'm just gonna kinda read some of the background here. Um, for the past year, they've had a group that has been working with a architectural firm out of Duluth um to really assess the needs of the building, and basically it was decided that um the best vision would be to look outside of remodeling that facility, given the extensive needs of that building. The members of the Board of Control recently met to discuss the issue and um have a recommendation for all school boards uh within the CISA twelve to consider this month. So there's seventeen school districts that support CISA twelve. Um, CISA twelve is one of the most spread out uh Cisas, has the smallest Cisas when you consider the number of districts that CISA twelve serves. Um, they looked at a variety of options about how, they also don't receive any direct funding sources, so all of the um revenue they get through their services that they push out to school districts is how they run their um CISA twelve pay for salaries and, and all of that. Knowing that they don't have a revenue source for building and capital investments, um, they have to look at school districts for that support. They looked at a variety of um funding options and ultimately decided that the one that made the most sense was um to potentially build, um, to potentially purchase a building, an existing building in Ashland that would need very little renovation um for the space that they have for their fifteen to eighteen support staff in CISA twelve. Um, and to divide that cost out evenly across the seventeen school districts. I support that, and I recommend that we move forward to support this resolution. Ultimately, Superior has the most students, but we use the least amount of their services because we are able to for the most part, provide many of those services ourselves because of our size. A lot of other school districts aren't able to hire, for example, their own special ed director, and they might share those services, or their own physical therapist, or their own. Um, and so to me, when all of us are able to equally access, access the building, it makes the most sense of it. We equally would contribute to supporting that. Um, ultimately, the cost, I believe, was about twenty-six thousand dollars it would cost. Districts, does that ring a bell?
Yeah, over three years, I think. Yep.
I think, yeah, it was twenty-six, I think, just one, but if smaller schools couldn't pay that upfront, then they could do it over three years. Yeah. Yeah. So it's not twenty-six for three years, it's twenty, twenty-six total. Um, but for smaller districts who couldn't um incorporate that into one budget year, they can pay that over three.
On the total. Some districts are being given the option to make it a three-year plan.
Right. So ultimately, you're being asked to approve that. Um, I support that uh tonight. Laura's been on the Board of Control, so I'll let her kinda speak to the process or any other questions that you might have.
Um, this is just something that um CISA twelve has been working on, I'd say for at least two, three years, I think. Um, Ken, the former, had, had kinda pioneered this, and there's been a lot of different meetings about what were the best options, and, and honestly, this was the most affordable option, and um the equity in everyone paying the same amount um makes me feel good to be a neighbor to CISA twelve and a partner to CISA twelve um and these other school districts that we regularly work with. So I don't really have much else to add, honestly. Um, but um Nick was here a few weeks ago and gave us those handouts about like what CISA twelve does.
Does anybody have any questions?
Are you saying?
Oh, go ahead, Ed.
Go ahead, Brooke.
Go ahead, Brooke.
I um, I appreciated their conservative approach to um choosing um what method would meet their needs. I think that was commendable. Um, I had a question, which fund or where does the, where do the funds come from uh from our district for this bill then?
Fund ten?
It'll be a fund ten expense, and it's, it would, I mean, it's ultimately either coming from, you know, we levy the dollars from the taxpayers or whatever amount of money that we get from the state, but in the end, it's, it's coming out of our budget. It's no.
Fund ten.
Our fund ten budget, it's not, we're not gonna get any grants.
This isn't something we could pay fund forty-six, use fund forty-six for, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, this is a strict fund ten. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and I appreciate Amy, you um kind of addressing with the smaller schools because that was my concern, even though we are uh voting for our district and essentially getting a better deal out of it. I mean, we have some pretty tiny schools, I think of Butternut and South Shore. Um, and I worry that they might not be able to afford that, but again, I know we have to make the decision for our district uh and vote on that, so I appreciate you saying that they utilize more services, so that's good.
Uh, Ed, before you ask your question, I just wanted to point out that uh this will not be able to move forward unless thirteen out of the seventeen school districts agree, and everyone on the CISA board was in agreement, which means all seventeen had at least one representative on their school board saying, we all made this decision together.
So the money that we pay CISA raises, just so I understand, that's not money they can use to do this themselves. It's, that's, they're just paying their employees to do their job. And so anything they're making is strictly for that.
So every spring, they ask for our agreement, cause they need to know how many staff that they will need to hire, and so based on what they need, I'll just, I use specialized, cause it's the easiest example. So if they're gonna be in need of director services or PT services, OT, they know that they're going to charge us X amount of dollars to set, to fund those positions, because that's how much it's gonna cost to hire those folks. So um, yeah, so the, the, what, what they get from us in revenue is how they, how they run CISA twelve. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just got one question. Who, who does the maintenance of this place, right? So we buy this building, CISA does, okay? There's maintenance to be done, there's heating to be paid, there's utilities to be paid. Who takes care of all that then?
I don't have the question, I don't have the answer to that.
I would assume it's, it's gonna have to be done, and that comes.
Yeah.
They all, right?
Assuming it's part of their overhead.
Building that they're in, right?
Right.
So whatever revenues they're receiving from us and other school districts.
And I would assume going into a different building, they're gonna have reduced costs for maintenance, given the needs of their current building.
Yeah, there's been large expenses in the past, and it came out of their budget for repairs, like for the door, or when there's bats in their building. Um, other things like that.
Pest control, maintenance, salaries, those are all built into their budget, and it's probably distributed.
That's how.
All the districts.
Yeah, we pay, I mean, we do pay service, pay for the cost of services.
Do you recall how much we pay CISA annually?
Uh, last year was about a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Okay.
Thank you for answering that.
I'll just put this out there. I struggle with, you know, the mic comes out of fund ten, which is the same fund that funds our staff for the most part. I struggle with seeing, even though it's twenty-six thousand for us, seeing that money come out of that same fund. We, when we talk about staffing issues and whatnot too, and especially in the near, in the future. So it's, this is my opinion, you know, we're paying more money out of a fund that we pay our staff with.
Yeah, how many times have they come to us for building money?
First time I can remember.
I, I don't think they have, because they've been in the same structure for so long. Yeah. And I, I've been in that building, and it is, it is rough. Um, and so I, again, I do see the need. Um, but to kinda piggyback, I guess, is I do have some hesitation, um, just because I know even looking ahead with the S R funds running out, I wanna be able to retain as many employees, and I know, again, it's one time twenty-six thousand, so we may have it now, but what does our future look like? Um, and again, I want what's best for our teachers and our staff and our district, so I do have a little bit of hesitation, especially with, you know, looking ahead at the agenda tonight. We've got some raises and new positions being created, and so I guess when the S R funds run out, who's gonna be cut? Where's the funding gonna come from? So those are just some of my hesitations as well. Um, but I do see that the building is in need of changes, for sure. I think the good news is it's a one-time cost, so that's good. It's not a reoccurring twenty-six thousand dollar cost. Um, so we won't have to, we won't have to budget for this. We can incorporate it into our budget for next year. Um, so we are able to do that, and I don't see a, a long-term effect of that because it's not a reoccurring cost, and they do provide us good services. We've tapped into them for safety support um, um, and other special education types of services, so they do, they are good, they are good partners.
I guess it's not, if it doesn't, you're gonna pay for it one way or another.
Yeah.
You're gonna pay for it one time, or you're gonna pay for it in the cost of services to come out. So you raise the cost of services, or we pay it now. I mean, that's ultimately what it's probably gonna come down to.
Mm-hmm. I did offer the option of maybe they needed to think about a virtual option and be housed in area schools. But that wasn't.
Didn't fly.
Is there an opportunity to reach out to other schools, school districts, to see what other districts were thinking?
That's, I am on the CISA, and all the representatives on the CISA from the other seventeen school districts were in support of this plan and also went through like a presentation of the different options where the School District of Superior would have paid a very hefty, larger sum in some of the other scenarios. Um, and so this was honestly the most affordable option for our district.
So the smaller schools too were?
Yep.
I really do not support a pay, a, a funding structure that would require us to pay based on the size of our school district. Um, we use the facilities, the least amount of all school districts. And yet, we should all have equal access to the building, and so I feel like this, we should all have, pay equally then, so this is a much more affordable scenario for us as compared to other scenarios they propose. Like, this is the most fair. Yeah. That was very pricey.
That just gives the options, it doesn't tell what the costs are.
I know.
Okay, all right. You have any other questions?
I don't know if, if you were going there right now or not, but just like any other proposal of take, for example, the PAC that we proved and having a breakdown of what the money is going to, and I think that would be a little bit beneficial to have that too.
The only reason um, there's a sense of urgency according to our director um, cause they need to put in a, a offer on a, on the property, and they need to have be able to say they have the money to, so I know that that's part of it. The total cost of the project is like, is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? Right on.
Yes, it's four hundred and fifty.
So the total cost of the project is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars divided between seventeen school districts. Um, it's a fifty-seven hundred square foot space that would need very little remodeling for the current employees to go into that facility, is my understanding. So it would be for purchasing of the building is how that money would be used.
And another thing that's good is that they, as Brooke said, are being very conservative with their expenses because they're planning to not need or have to renovate or build a new space with like training spaces. They're actually just gonna be out in the community utilizing already existing community spaces for larger meetings that they have, so that was another expense that they caught or cut, you know, from having to add to the um renovation of this other building.
I, I, I think, it adds for the, that we, we can't have, we can't see it, won't be able to, so.
But I, I would think that uh Mr. Matson can be.
We can invite him back.
And to uh, you know, produce, here's what your services are in your school district.
I can have that. I, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's, when he came here and gave us all that.
Yeah.
Well, you're not talking about the services, you're talking about the structure.
Yeah, and what, what is being funded? Like, is it something just ridiculous that they don't need, but they want? Is it wants? Is it needs? Is it?
It's based on needs. They needed, A, the building they have is dilapidated and falling apart, and the other one is they needed more square footage.
I feel like this is of the options they looked at between remodeling the existing building, building a new building, and looking at an existing building, this was the cheapest of the three options they looked at. And I, kind of back to Laura's point, I think, did you guys have an opportunity to see this, the space or to talk about the space or where the space is?
Yep, they did tours of the different spaces. Um, they did virtual presentations for all. Here's the thing, it was like earlier in the year, everyone like got delegated. I'm the CISA delegate, so that information, I was a part of all those meetings. I was the one representing our school board because you all appointed to me to be that person. Um, and it's not that information can't be shared. Um, it can be. I'll share all the spreadsheets. I'll ask Nick to send them out. But the Board of Control made the decision to bring this back to our school boards to ask for what the Board of Control asked for, so I can share it after. I don't have it right now. I will tell you, because they went through an assessment group, um, what was it called? ICS. Um, you know, this was definitely something that was gone through multiple levels for the past two years of an assessment of needs, what exactly they were going to do. I wouldn't recommend this if I thought they were spending money on frivolous things or anything like that, and I can guarantee you the other well-respected members on the CISA board from the other school districts. And I can guarantee you the other well-respected members on the CISA board from the other school districts also would not have approved of this additional expense had they had not thought it was necessary. And economically, the best option for all of our districts.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There were no discussion items. Uh, we had a couple of informational items, starting with the Fund Ten Revenue and Expenditures Report. Do you want to run through that?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So we now end of the fiscal year. We are still going to probably have a few more entries once we get the auditors onsite. They always make a few entries. But if you scroll down, this is where we ended the revenues on the year. So we budgeted roughly fifty-six point seven million and we came in at about fifty-six point three million, so it's a little bit shy of our goal, uh, which is okay. You know, again, it was, it's a budget. It's pretty dark, close to a fifty-six million dollar budget. And then if you want to flip to expenses. Oh, I'm sorry, that was expenses. So that is very good. We underspent by.
I was like, what?
I know, I found revenues first. So we came in at a budget of about four hundred thousand.
Okay.
There we go.
Now if you could flip to revenues. Right next to it. There we go. Um, and then we were to the good on the revenues. We budgeted.
That's still, so I think you have expense on both.
It is.
Yeah, you do.
Is it both expenses?
Uh, one is four twelve and one is four forty something. Are they just flipped?
How about, we'll flip to the, we'll flip over to the, if you go down to the next agenda item, we can talk for those are it.
All right.
So we'll just talk about where we ended up for the year. I don't think those are.
You're gonna provide the fiscal update?
Yes.
Okay. Roll right into that.
Roll right into, good segue. Pretty robust, uh, presentation here.
Three slides.
So we'll just go over how we ended up for twenty-one, twenty-two. We've been talking a little bit about twenty-two, twenty-three. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, um, we're looking at doing about eight hundred seventy-one thousand again estimated because we anticipate a few entries. Upending the audit into fund balance. The goal is to kind of get that fund balance lifted up a little bit. Now we're gonna be at approximately twenty-seven, which is good. Obviously with all the talk of Esser and what the future holds, it's always good to add a little fund balance in case we need to utilize it in the upcoming years. And then we're also able to put, uh, about one million into fund forty-six, which is awesome. Because we know that we will always be able to use those on capital projects. So we know that we need to nice refs, we need to work on all of the buildings. So the more money that we can get into that, the better.
That's good news. That's good news.
Yeah, yeah. So. Where we are looking for twenty-one, twenty-two, we will have the audit. They will be here next week, I believe. And so we're hoping for a week and then within a month, we can finalize audit report.
Now, last time when they did the audit, they were very late.
Yes, they were.
Would you anticipate this being better timing?
You know, we had some very, uh, good discussions with them. They were, you know, facing the same thing that everybody's facing, staffing shortage, staffing turnover. And so last year they had staffing turnover, which caused some extensions onto our audit. And they're looking at, um, a twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary, preliminary budget. Again, very preliminary, uh, DPI. And states not even get our estimated aid numbers out till October fifteenth. But based off the information that we have right now, this is where we think we'll end up, again, going in with the balanced budget, which is always the goal, right? One thing to note is that we are looking at our local sources, which is your tax levy. And some student fees and stuff that fall into that category is significantly lower this year because our tax levy is, is going to be lower this year. We're looking at about, I think, a little over a million dollars less that we're able to levy on the taxes. And that's because, if you remember the conversations, your levies, your revenue limit sheet is based off a three-year rolling average of student counts. And we still had that year on there where we had about forty-five hundred students. That year has now fallen off. Now we're using forty-three hundred, uh, forty-two hundred as our estimate for this year. So you're looking at a significant lower amount of students on that revenue limit that we're able to utilize. Unfortunately though, we, according to the July one aid estimates, are looking to get um, even more money from the state and state aid. Remember last year? What I thought we were going to receive revenue from the state was about six hundred thousand dollars last month we actually got. And again, we didn't know that number till October fifteenth. So that's why it's. They gave some aid estimates also, our, our state sources, that six hundred level, uh, that went up this, for this year.
How firm is the federal? Is that pretty firm?
Federal's firm.
Okay.
We got this out, I'll take it. That's, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that's what I thought.
There might be a little bit different in the closer because we haven't fully got that one yet, but we can estimate it. Uh, again, on the expense side, that's including that increase for staff. It's including the five point eight percent increase for health insurance. The personal services includes the payment that we make to CISA for that twenty-six thousand. Nothing out of the ordinary on the expense side. And we'll continue to keep you guys updated as we go through this process. Again, I would anticipate probably after we do the third, the second Friday. Third Friday in September, that we'll have a, a little bit better understanding of where we'll end up, especially in that first category and level of resources, because that will affect the, the revenue limit.
So question, because I, I saw like this report that came out and it was saying that the state of Wisconsin went from eighteenth ranked up to eighth. I mean, do you think that's any correlation to increased funding from state aid or am, am I making that up? What are you thinking?
It eighths to eighteenth in spending per student.
No, in just ranking, like.
Educational ranking in the U.S. We went from eighteenth.
Well, I'm.
Increase in any title.
Right, there was no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's been no, yeah, there's been no direct funding.
Okay.
Just the hard work of the teachers.
Well, that's incredible to celebrate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if you could, if we were seeing like if our title funding had doubled, like it's.
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
It went down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just for clarifications, everybody knows, this officially has to be approved November first. Is that correct? I know you're learning that, but that's the date, right?
Yeah, so yes, we just have an annual budget hearing, which is the statutory deadline is November first.
So we'll have that final budget. And as we learn more, we'll keep.
David? Well, yeah, well, the next set date will likely be after we have that third Friday, November.
By the end of October, it has to be done, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, we have to certify the levies and get them out to the county side that first Friday in November, part of that fall stuff.
Okay. Cause you know, like a lot of times we have a special meeting.
Yep, and I think it worked out okay this year where it's gonna be part of the cow. I think, I don't remember.
Yes.
We're good. It's been on the calendar.
October tenth is.
You're gonna make me look it up.
Minus seven, right? Is it October third is the cow?
Remember.
November first is a Tuesday, so we're actually going to have the budget hearing or, yeah, budget hearing on October three first.
That's the first, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
That's part of the cow, right? For the cow, yeah.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to accept the budget and insurance committee's report as presented.
Budget approved.
Second.
In a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, next we have the Personnel Negotiations Committee. Where we have eleven. I think that's a record.
No.
Had way more.
I don't know. All right. The first action item, administration recommends approval of the July twenty-twenty-two new hires, transfers and separation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess I would like to maybe add, um, something. I don't know if there's any way that we could consider, um, adding if these were voluntary or not. Transfers and things or, um, the reason for leaving. I know we do the exit surveys, which Molly had said we do, um, but who sees the results of those? Because even when we are approving these hires, transfers and separations, I guess we don't have, um, a decent idea of the bigger picture. So who, when, who gets the results of those? How do we know?
Thank you to HR. So if you guys want to see the results, I can send them to the board as well. The exit surveys are anonymous though, so it's not gonna tell you necessarily who said what. But there's some identifying questions on there, like what was their position, who was their supervisor, that type of thing.
We use, you know, any of that information, just like we use any other survey information. As we're on, you know, ongoing continuous improvement, we use that information. So if there's trends or patterns in responses, we would adjust to that.
Perfect. That's why I was asking, so.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Second, uh, the administration recommends releasing Tara Gonyer, our Director of Student Services from her twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year contract, per her request effective July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, with the liquidated damages provision reinforced.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just that she'll be missed. Thank you.
Certainly appreciate all the work you've done. You got to meet and work one year together, but as we've walked through these last few years and stuff, all the work that you've done in the community with the special education, especially with parents. And with the work programs that are now in place. I hope that, uh, whoever follows you can follow in your footsteps because you, you have been a great leader in the district.
Thank you. It was a tough decision, but this will look out here. It's right for him, so.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the administration recommends releasing Heather Wild, our GTO teacher, from her twenty-two, twenty-three school year contract per her request effective July fifth, twenty-twenty-two, with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Move to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
She just, uh, another fantastic teacher. I understand how she is. I talked to her. Going into private business, but, uh, just the way that she connected with students that are such at risk in, uh, getting them to buy back into school and, and, and leading the program and getting those kids to walk across that stage. So she was very valuable to our district.
She made really good connections with her students.
Really?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, then all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the administration recommends approval of the new job description and new salary schedule for the communications specialist position. This position will be in the professional category of the employee handbook.
Move to approve.
Second.
Punched it up anyway.
A motion and a second. Discussion.
I'll just give a little bit of context and answer any questions. Um, this is a position the district had had previously. This was a position we have been considering for the last several months and, and given, um, feedback from the board on, um, really looking at some goals for the district around communications and public relations. But as well as just the demand of the, the work that we have coming at our office. We need some folks with some, um, expertise in this area, I think, to really help support our district in this, in this work. So, um, we're recommending the addition of this new position that would work, um, out of my office. This position and the position afterwards are all budgeted based on development of an annual budget where we're, um, constantly looking at whether we replace people or in the same capacity. And so, for example, we've used the example in the past, like, you know, when we have had, used to have two payroll people, now we have that absorbed as part of another position. So we're always kind of looking at our positions and reevaluating, um, whether we need them in the same capacity or not. And then incorporate that, um, into our budget. We also take a look at, you know, when our student numbers drop, then our section numbers drop. And so that means we need less teachers, uh, you know, and so we're, we're constantly looking at our staffing and what we need and how we budget for that. So it's a, it's always moving. It's not like you hire somebody and you have, you're replacing it with someone else. There's a lot of big pieces besides just personnel into the budget. Do you have anything to add to that for Shannon, Molly? That's what she'd say.
So the monies were already being spent there. There was already somebody in that position, correct? Or is this a brand new?
Brand new position.
A brand new.
But we have other positions that we're not necessarily replacing for next year. And we have other expenses that we're not incurring next year that allow us to be able to afford this new position.
I can't give you. Oh, but I can't either. Go ahead, Brooke.
Was this one taking over for Kelly? I think, was this one of the positions created?
Kelly had done a lot of the work around communication, but even while she was here, we discussed the need. The volume of work that comes at that office is more than one person can take on, if that makes sense.
I'm excited. Part of our mission has been being community, um, connected as well and utilizing our community partners, working together. And, um, I think this is a really good first step towards that. So, thank you.
And it is returning to a position that we had a number of years ago. Lady by the name of Jean Till served in this, uh, position for a number of years for the district. And the promotion of the district, uh, whether it had been through communication, through the, uh, the media outlets and or with the newspapers. And we know that, you know, we get our newspaper here in town twice a week. But, um, there was always a communication about what was going on in the district and stuff. And I know we have the, the media opportunity with our, our onsite website and everything. But it, it's, to me, I was looking at it when, when it was brought up that we need to be more out front about all the positive things that are going on in our district.
Yeah.
And, and not diminishing the fact that all the work that everybody has been doing to get that out there, but kind of lost that. In, in my opinion, so. I, I think it's a, a good position. I worry, uh, long-term about the budget. As, as I would assume the rest of my colleagues here do too. And knowing that you, Amy, and Shannon, you sat down and you looked at this and how are we going to support this? It, it does bother me a little bit that, um, just on the surface, in two years from now, and we no longer have Esser funds, if we were to have to eliminate teaching positions in the district. But again, that's driven a lot by the number of students that we have and the money we have available.
And also state funding, you know? We haven't had an increase, so there needs to be some tough conversations at the state level about increasing.
It's, it's not gonna be a popular thing. Two years and maybe, maybe it'll be okay too. We don't know, but.
And I want to just reiterate, we are doing extensive planning right now so that when the Esser funds are no longer here, it's not gonna be so drastic. You heard us talking about building up a fund balance. I mean, we're preparing, I think, in a good way. So in two thousand twenty-four, we're, we're working or transitioning out of fund, uh, out of these Esser funds and it won't be such a drastic adjustment.
Not gonna be.
That's the goal. That's, that's what we're working towards, so it doesn't feel that way.
And one more time again for me, I, as I was reading this again, the professional category. There is the administrative category that supports, support staff, teachers, and where exactly does this position drop?
So this position typically is gonna require a bachelor's degree in the area of communication or similar degree. So we have other, I'm looking at Molly, we have other positions like, um, I want to describe other positions in that category.
Yeah, so I think we created that a couple of years ago where it's anything that requires education and or licensure. So they used to fall within the support staff category, but we couldn't attract. So they used to fall within the support staff category, but we couldn't attract those, that type of level of employee with the benefits that were in the support staff. So we created the professional level category because we need that to compete with other industries. Because these are types of positions that can be hired anywhere.
Is nurse under this?
Nurses are under.
Nurses.
All of our IT employees are under there, which they can work anywhere. HR employees are under there, payroll benefits. Brand's position is under there, so it's those types of positions.
Thank you.
Like a physical therapist, occupational.
Physical therapist, occupation, that have a bachelor's degree.
Yes.
The assistants, yeah, they have bachelors. The ones that have master's degrees follow the teacher contract.
Thank you for answering that.
Let's put it out there. I'm kind of in the same boat as Steve Olson here. I, I see a need for the position. I absolutely want the position. We've had that conversation. But on the top of it, I know I had a conversation today about funds and Fontan and, you know, I, I get to my side, but I look in the future of two years from now. We're looking at cuts. We're creating a position. And we're going to cut positions at some point, I would imagine. And, you know, how, how are we going to pick and choose? And how, how is that going to come down? Obviously, probably don't have the discussion right now, but how's that, how's it going to play out in the future when we're hiring an administrative position or a professional position in here and potentially face releasing any other staff member?
So, I mean, it's, it's, this isn't just an issue two years from now. This is an issue we face every spring, right? So every year we have to do a, we have to do that analysis about what are our current needs? What's our budget allow for us to do and what's our priorities? So I would, I would argue every, every year we do that. We, every year we make those priorities. An example has been in the last couple of years, even before Essar, we invested in counselors or school social workers. Now we've been able to tap into some of those funds to offset the cost of that. But that's an analysis we do every year when it comes to the budget. And so in 2024, we'll have to do an analysis about what's working in our district, what's not working in our district, and make adjustments across all departments, not just this or new positions. It'll be across all departments.
Would those, I guess, decisions come through us or is that through you?
Um, I think typically that happens as an administrative team, that we talk through those things throughout the year, discuss what our priorities are, what our needs are. We always bring that information to the board for transparency purposes. And the process is certainly shared at the, at the board level. And I'm looking at Molly and Shannon for any.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there is language in the handbook under each section about how we would, if we need to lay employees up, how that works for their area. And to go back to the, when we look at staffing every year, it's, you know, the last couple of years, we've just been able to do it through attrition where we've had elementary teachers retiring. We just don't replace them. Class sizes are so low. So obviously, if we can do that, that's what we do every year. So that's something that we can respect. But there is language in the handbook to kind of guide who or what that process looks like.
Shannon, do you have anything to add from an annual budget process?
You know, from my perspective, it's not so much like it's this category. It's this category. I think we look at an overall number. I think it would be, you know, come 24, 25, if we're looking at a $5.5 billion deficit, that we would say, okay, well, how do we have efficiencies within the district? Can we do anything through attrition? That's the first choice, right? You know, it's going to be across all departments. Can we run more efficiently in operations? Do we have smaller class sizes? What would we do at service? So it's not that any one department is targeted. I think it's a district-wide analysis that we would do.
And I think we always look at our values, and we've always valued small class sizes and we've valued health supports and we've valued different things in our school district. And so I think those continue to be things that we would use as a mix.
So do you, do you take into account who was hired? This, the, the newest hire is when you're going to think about who is going to be cut?
Just because someone's funded out of Essar doesn't, I think, necessarily mean they would be the people that, that, that we, we we would look at our overall budget and what our needs are and how we use our grant dollars, our state dollars and our federal dollars to fund the positions. So it's about what are the needs of the district and how do we leverage the revenue that we have or the grant sources we have to pay for those folks? So.
Yeah, I mean, and then for, just for teachers, for example, there's handbook language about like criteria. So obviously, we would need to look at certification. So if we need to cut in special ed, it would be that area. Or if it's just everything's equal, then it goes by seniority. So all of that is laid out in the handbook.
Thank you.
But for example, just roughly saying, if you had a $100,000 deficit next year, this position is anywhere between $55,000 to $67,000. Without approving this position, you don't have a $50,000 deficit.
If we had it.
If, just as an example.
It gets to that, regardless, we wouldn't be coming to Asper because we had. That's not a sense. We wouldn't ask for it if we were looking at a deficit. Maybe, maybe a better way of putting it would be if we had a surplus. Like if we, if we were looking at a surplus at the end of the year, when we were 800 and some thousand, right? That we weren't going to put into Fund 46. I don't get to roll that over to next year and say, I can apply that 871,000 to positions for this 25 years, right? That money goes into fund balance. So it's not like a, a rule. School district do a zero-based budget, so you literally lose it type of thing.
And there are some positions that we have funding out of Essar that are not, that will not be sustained. And that was very clear when those were, like the, the four teachers at the high school for credit recovery. That was very clear. I'm trying to think. There was one other one.
But when you say, when you say that that was very clear, that was very clear to those teachers when they were hired?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes.
Temporary post, like in the job posting, it said it was a temporary position in two years.
Okay.
And the fund balance, money can't be taken out of that to go back to town, right? It only goes one, it only goes one way, right?
A misconception about fund balance is that it's money sitting at the bank, and that's, that's not true. I mean, it's a combination of a lot of things. I know we've talked about that before. So it's, you know, see your assets, your liabilities, and so is it the cash that you have in the bank? But yeah, you can utilize your fund balance if you, you know, if I came to you guys next year and said, or let's use 24, 25, and said, we're going to have a $100,000 deficit. My recommendation would probably be rather than cutting anybody, we can sustain that through dipping into fund balance because we've been building it for the last five years, and that's the purpose of building it, right? You build it up in case you come into these situations where you have to use it. Now, if it was, we're looking at a $3 million deficit, then we could probably be having a different conversation. Say, maybe we do a combination of both. We can live down to like that is okay. We can, you know, we feel comfortable with dipping into fund balance, and then we would look at maybe cutting positions. Doesn't always have to be positions, obviously, you know, and it can be other things, but that's where you're going to get your most, you're going to get your most bang for your.
The other thing that I've said repeatedly is, in order to spend $11 million, it's hard to do that without spending it on people, right? And yet, we have to have a balance of spending it on people for these exact reasons and spending it on things like technology, curriculum, staff development, things that we don't have to sustain outside of this budget year. So we're trying to balance people with things that are not reoccurring costs and planning for 2024 so it doesn't feel like a fiscal cliff and that we've transitioned well and planned well so that we're able to sustain past 24, 25, and those Essar funds are no longer here. So there's many combinations of strategies in order to make sure fall of 2024, we don't feel like we're in a situation where we have to cut a large number.
Makes sense. Do we for sure know that there will be cuts made? Or is that something where we'll just have to see when the time comes?
It's really hard to plan three years from now or two years from now.
A year where we're entering into a biannual budget cycle. So we're coming out of the, there's so many things that could happen.
Yeah, you, you don't know how many people are going to retire.
Right. Well, we still don't know the state revenue.
As I say, you don't know what, you don't know what our head count could be.
Right.
Could be. You don't know what the state revenue is going to be.
You don't know how many retirements we're going to have. Right.
All part of the equation.
Right. As experienced teachers leave and we hire teachers who aren't as experienced, we save money there because you're not paying the same salaries. I mean, there's so many different aspects that go into an annual budget that need to be considered.
Right, and I, I, I see that, but then I don't think we can say confidently that we aren't going to have to make big cuts because we're preparing for the future because we don't really fully know, I guess. But.
I don't think we're going to have this answer tonight. I'd like to call the question, please.
All right. Is there any other discussion? None, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, the administration recommends approval of the new job description for the HR Talent Acquisition Specialist Position. This position will be in the professional category of the handbook and on the HR Specialist Salary Schedule.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All right. Do you want to give an explanation, Molly?
Yep. So Erin left HR to go to early childhood for a part-time position. So we would be using this position to replace that. I think I, a couple of years ago, talked to the board about the number of professional level HR staff in the HR department. So this would be creating a position that would be doing employment specialist work and recruitment work, which we're really going to need coming up with teacher shortages to be involved in job fair recruiting, that type of thing. So this would be a higher cost, about $13,000 than what the HR secretary role is. But they'd also be doing higher level work, so.
And this has been part of the vision of your department for quite some time, if I am correct? You've been trying to strive to this?
Yep.
I'm reading somewhat about trends. Sorry, Lynn. I mean, can you just give a little bit more information about that teacher shortage and what they're predicting right now?
Yeah, I mean, well, right now, we're sitting with pretty open specialized positions and no candidates. So we need to start thinking outside the box and doing other things to get candidates in here. We haven't been able to do a lot of recruiting at job fairs or other emergency events because it would have just been me doing it.
You're working.
It's happening.
Although we have done some about this spring.
We have. The principals have gone.
Thank you.
They've been recruited to go and help do that. But I think we just need to get in front of it. So a lot of districts are, when they have student teachers, they're offering them positions when they're student teaching. And so they already are full when their call comes, so those are the types of things that we need to start doing. Building a pipeline, getting out there. We could have our own job fairs, that type of thing.
What was your question?
I was going to ask if there's any other discussion.
Me too.
I did.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, then all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommends the approval of the updated salary schedule for the Assistant Cook Position.
Move to approve? Second.
Motion and a second. Question? Jamie, if you want to talk about it a little bit.
This position is a current position, and we work with the HR department. I don't want to say eliminating positions, but cleaning up our positions. We had about seven positions in each kitchen, and when we did that, we went down to four. And it gives us room to give this position, which is an entry-level position, a little more dollars to get started. Generally, our staff does not start at that step one. It seems to be going in the area. I'm looking at a board.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, it just comes right out of Jamie's budget, the service budget. Yep.
About $4,200 here.
I'll say, yeah, you're just self-sustaining.
Yeah.
Correct.
But I just think that's important to note that it's his budget and not.
Fontan, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the administration recommends the approval of the updated salary schedule for the Physical Therapy Assistant Position.
Move to approve? Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Can I?
Yes, you can.
So as you guys know, over the last couple of years, we've been updating healthcare-related positions because we were falling behind in those areas. We did the nurses, made some changes to physical and occupational therapists. And so we, they have been asking Tara and I over the last year to review the assistant positions. Most, most school districts contract this service out. So we used some of the Wisconsin school districts that do have this position to compare to as well as the healthcare industry and the Twin Ports, because that's who really who works in agreement for these positions.
You know, the cost of contracting it out compared to our district doing it itself.
Yep, it includes about 30% more than what we would pay them salary. So it's better deal for us not to contract position out if we don't have to.
I'll say that's, we've kind of gone through that with other positions, whether it be bus drivers or whatever. It's always been.
It's always more when you have to contract out.
That's the one we've got to contract out.
Sometimes you're in a situation, you have to because you have nothing else, but we try to avoid that if we can.
I think consistency is hard. They roll through people when it's for students, not knowing what therapist is special or what days.
The poor is an important part of that therapy.
And can someone add what fund this comes on?
What's the fund? Where, where's the money come from?
Yep.
Yeah, they're, they come out of full through. Yep. PT and OT come out of full through, which is a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement back to the school.
Federal, right? Federal.
Fully, fully reimbursed.
Yeah. And just to save the argument, that's going to be for the occupational therapist too.
Is this also to help even fill positions as they come, come around or as needed?
This is certainly for attracting and retaining staff. Yeah.
I mean, I, I looked up the average and it falls right in the average now.
Yeah.
This is for retaining staff. We have no.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, but the point being, it will attract news, that we need to continue to attract and retain staff.
It's essential and safe.
Correct. That's what we have to keep in mind is.
Yes.
If we don't do this to retain who we have, they're going to leave. It's, it's not for being unhappy. It's about money.
Yes. Yep.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the administration recommends the approval of the updated salary schedule for the Occupational Therapy Assistant Position.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion, motion and a second. Discussion.
Same thing.
Yep. Any other, if there's no other discussion then, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, number nine, the administration recommends the following updated vacation schedule and language in the Support Staff section of the Employee Handbook.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. I'm going to, to you, Molly, on that one.
I need to give an explanation for this one. So back in 2019, when we rolled the three handbooks into one, we wanted to create a vacation schedule for support staff that incorporated giving them a week of time right off the bat, instead of them having to work for a year with no time off. And then the next July 1st, they would be allocated what they had earned over the previous year. So obviously, this day and time, we can attract new staff with that allocation. So when we went through the chart and it was a group of staff, most of them are no longer here, the only change that we wanted to make to that chart was adding a week for new hires. What happened was we inadvertently changed it so that they had to work an extra year longer before they were moved up to the next level of allocation. So if you can see two weeks, they would get it at five years, or sorry, three weeks, they'd get it at five years on the old chart. Now they don't get it until they've hit six years. So because it was not our intention to change what the current staff were already getting, So because it was not our intention to change what the current staff were already getting, the old employees that were doing payroll had never changed the practice because that's not what we were intending. When we took over paid rule last year, we went to the new allocation chart, which it was brought up now that that was inadvertently hurting staff and making them work a year longer. So I want to go back to the old chart and also take away the one week and start employees off with two weeks because we need to give them that time off to attract staff. And then we would also be, we would be front-loading everybody on July 1st. And it would be prorated then based on their anniversary date in the school year. So if someone hits like the five-year level in December, then we would, because we're already decreasing their longevity, we would also be prorating the rest of that fiscal year for them to the new rate. But those would be what's, what's highlighted in yellow would be the change.
Are there any questions?
We're learning comments particularly for this at all.
Comments?
Public comment?
Okay.
If there's no, if there's no discussion, then all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Next, the administration recommends the following updated vacation language in the professional staff section of the employee handbook.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
So this is just adding the prorated language, um, similar to what was just done for support staff to say if they hit the, uh, next level, they'd be prorated within that fiscal year. And then we did not have the new language or the language about new employees, what they're allocated if they don't start at the beginning of the fiscal year. That's just saying their amount would be prorated based on their hire date through June. So it's just adding that into the professional category.
Okay. Any discussions or questions on that? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last, the administration recommends paying out support staff and professional staff that are on the old vacation plan for their vacation time earned as of July 1st of 2022, and then moving them to the new plan of front-loading their vacation time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Okay. This is a costly one, but the, in 2019, that we started allocating new staff front-loading it, the, all of the staff that were hired before 2019 that are on the vacation plan, like I said, had to work for a year. So what happens is when they leave, we have to pay them out their vacation balance. And we also have to pay them out from their term date through that fiscal year of what they would have earned. So the, this is an unfunded liability that just increases every year for the district and we have to report it to the auditors. If we can pay them out and start front-loading them like we do with, similar to what we did with the administrator group last year where we paid out their vacation into an HRA. But this would be paying it out to support staff on their paycheck. And then we start front-loading them every July 1st, like all the people hired after 2019 and all the administrators. So then when they leave, if they use their vacation up to the point when they left, they owe us back. Otherwise they, we don't owe them and they don't owe us if it's even at that point. So this is, that's similar to what most organizations, how they run vacation schedules.
Correct.
And that's what we do for our other groups.
It takes, it takes away that liability. Yep.
Right. Right.
That's why most companies went to that about three, four years ago.
Yep. So this would be a cost of $180,000 to run to pay this out.
Okay. And that's coming from?
This one was a, a discussion that we, we had to have. In the end, we, we didn't get, uh, how the Esther funds could be used and this is a, a, a low cost for that.
And an example of a one-time cost that we don't have to worry about.
Don't have to worry about.
Right.
So we will be utilizing the Esther funds to pay this.
Oh, good news.
All right.
So this is, I was worrying, uh, uh, my, uh, my viewpoint is teachers fall on this mix of being paid off as vacation stuff, right?
No, the teachers do not get vacation. This is only year-round staff.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, they have two personal days. Is that what, for that vacation?
Yeah, that's. Yeah. They have personal time and sick time. This would be only year-round staff receive vacation.
Vacation. Okay.
One last thing, um, I just noticed the website still has last year's handbook on it. I know Kelly helped to support that, so.
We were going to wait to see what.
That's what I was going to say. After this, are you uploading the new handbook? Okay. Okay.
And Esther funds are use or lose, just to throw it off there, right?
Okay. Yeah. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There were no discussion items and there were no informational items. So I'd entertain a motion to accept the Personnel and Negotiations Committee's report as presented.
I'd like to ask a request, Lynn, before we vote, if that's okay, like a discussion thing?
Yes.
Thank you. Molly, um, obviously, um, you're very good. You've got a lot of things that we needed to correct in our district. But I was just thinking, as we were talking about the exit surveys, would it be possible for the board to be informed, like, um, like a summary or like those trends you're talking about? I think it'd be helpful for the board to be aware. So when we're approving, you know, additional positions, that we have some of that information of just what our employees are seeing and experiencing or those things. I mean, I don't even need to read every single survey, to be honest. Like, I trust your expertise. But if we could know kind of what those trends are, uh, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we have it in a Google form, so it's already built. So.
Oh, nice.
I can send you all that information.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. I agree, Laura. I like that.
All right. What was I, motion to accept the Personnel Negotiations Committee's report as presented. Was there? There a motion and a second on that?
I'll mark. Nope, not yet. I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel and Negotiations Committee.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Operations Committee of, has one action item, the recommendation from Food Service Director Jamie Wilson to increase the price of school meals.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Do you want to touch on that, Jamie?
I sure can. This is something that we, you know, we look at yearly. You know, as Ed had said earlier about Fund 50, that's what we operate under. And all, every single meal is either paid for by USDA or small amount Wisconsin DPI reimbursement or parent payment. We are required to look at those numbers and make sure that we are charging. We're required to look at USDA payment per meal and parent payment per meal to make sure that it's somewhat in the same range. So that's what gives us, um, requirement that we need to raise our prices this year. We haven't raised any prices in two years, two plus, because they've been free for all. Um, and we're just asking for a 10 cent increase for elementary and middle school. And we're only increasing a nickel at the high school. We take these increases, we don't take them lightly because we know it's only a dime or a nickel a day. But with one student in school at a time, then we play it adds up. So this is our recommendation for this year.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Jamie, is there any update on what we're going to extend that? This would only be obviously for, go back to having the.
All meals, everything I'm hearing, 99% chance that we are going back to paid meals, paid at the end of the school year.
The extension only went till September, I think, right?
Exactly. Um, but some things in our department, we still will have universal free breakfast for all students at all schools, right? That will only affect, you know, half of our students for, um, paid lunch. And then we offer free meals after school, at middle school, at high school. We will still be able to do that. We have worked with Casey already, um, our free reuse application online was just approved in the last couple of days. And just getting that out and getting parents to know that we need them to fill it up. So they don't incur those charges if they don't.
Every parent will get that in the back-to-school registration on the student.
I'm so appreciative of the online form versus the old form first, forever. So.
Same here.
So nice.
I don't want, paper form will be available.
Yeah.
It's not, if somebody asks for it on request, I mean, I mean, we really can help parents. It can be filled out on your phone.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, then all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There were no discussion items and no informational items. So I'd entertain a motion to accept the Operations Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Last, we've got the Legislative Committee. There were no action items and no discussion items and informational items. The Office of School Safety launches School Critical Incident Response Team Program. The Wisconsin Department of Justice announced that the Office of School Safety has begun training 12 regional critical incident response teams around the state. Uh, the OSS considers a school-related critical incident to be a sudden and unexpected incident or sequence of events which can cause trauma within a school community that may overwhelm the normal coping mechanisms of the school. School crisis may be a large-scale incident or small-scale incident that may be more individualized and affects a small group of people. According to the DOJ, critical incidents in schools include threats or acts of violence, natural disasters, serious injuries to students or staff, suicide, weather-related disasters, community turmoil, intruders, and Amber Alert, and hate crimes. And the second informational item is the WASB Resolutions Book is now updated and posted online. Resolutions adopted by the annual WASB Delegate Assembly set the policy, uh, direction for the WASB and its lobbying efforts. Board resolutions for the consideration for the 2023 Delegate Assembly must be submitted to the WASB by September 15th.
So I have a couple of ideas. Sorry. Um, and I also want to know if our staff and, um, administration have a couple of ideas. But we've talked about the funding needs and like putting together resolution about the funding, asking sped increase again, um, and then truancy, which we started working on prior to COVID and, um, maybe trying to partner with Health and Human Services about that issue if they were interested in doing that and picking that back up. Amy, um, Kelly and I had really started to kind of work on that. And I can try to find some of that as well. But any other board members too? I think Ed, you're the representative. We'd want to start drafting some of that, um, soon to make sure it was ready by September 15th for submission.
Any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion to accept the Legislative Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the committee reports. Are there any other reports by members of the board tonight? Uh, we'll move on to district and program highlights.
Clearly.
Somewhere time.
Summer and, uh, the work of planning our upcoming professional development is our high priority right now.
Okay.
We must have a lot of teachers engaged in other trainings and stuff, Crystal.
Lots of teacher work happening, especially at the secondary level proficiency tables. Our teacher librarians have been working hard on their computer science standards and planning for digital literacy. And then at the beginning of August, we've got our summer, our summer institute coming up where we tried to pack a lot of offerings and it's going to be kind of, we're super busy planning for that right now. And we do a summer book study going on about, about grading for our middle school and high school teachers too. So, yeah.
And summer school ends next week.
Yeah.
Middle school and elementary.
High school started early. Someone's going to end at the same time.
Thursday next week.
Yeah. Be honest.
All right. Consider, uh, is there any other district program highlights before we move on? If not, consideration of bills and pre-approved bills.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
The bills?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And carries. Are there any comments by members of the public tonight? No cards. All right. Our next board committee of the whole meeting will be held on Monday, August 1st at 5 o'clock. Regular school board meeting will be on August 8th, also at 5 o'clock here in the board office. That, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Your little, the way you say it too.
It's just, I'm just going to start writing your guys. Everybody just looks at me.
Should we go for a beer tonight?
Thomas.
In, see?
Well, it's only coming by.